I'd like to call to order the Plans Zone Commission Meeting of today, Tuesday, October 4th. I need to remind everybody in the audience that you will have an opportunity to speak. I need to also ask anybody that has their cellphone on to either mute it or turn it off so it doesn't interfere with our audio. I am your chair tonight. Unfortunately, I've lost my vice chair and my secretary, so Commissioner Hepner will be Secretary Pro Tem.
All right, roll call.
We'll start off with our roll call for our public hearing. Go ahead, Commissioner Hepner.
Schneider.
Present.
Eichelberry.
Present.
Johnson's excused, Tomlin's excused, Ingram.
Present.
Hepner, present. Manus.
She just walked in.
Darrington.
Here.
Stokk.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hepner. Thank you.
I apologize for my late arrival.
No need, no need. We will move on to report of city council activity.
Oh, nothing major to report. The rezoning for 1200 East 39th Street has moved to second consideration.
Thank you, Laura. Secretary's report.
Move the report.
Second.
All in favor of the secretary's report is printed, signified by aye. Aye.
Chairman, we missed the public hearing.
Oh, I jumped out of the regular meeting, didn't I? Sorry, let's back up. We'll start off with our new business. Case number REZ 22-06 is request that AHHE Codings LLC to rezone 516 West 35th Street from C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to I1 Light Industrial District. Matt?
Thank you. The subject property is highlighted in yellow on the map on the left. It's located just north of West 35th Street and east of Gaines Street, between Gaines and Harrison. To the south is the park where Duck Creek flows through. The map on the right shows that it is in close proximity to the Duck Creek floodway and some of that floodplain. There's currently two buildings on the site that are vacant. So the property is zone C1, which is a neighborhood commercial district. So to the west and north is light industrial. To the east is C1 Neighborhood Commercial. Just to the northeast is C3, which is a general commercial zoning district, so a little bit more intense. And then to the south is open space. The future land use map shows this area as regional commercial. However, just to the west is industry. Parkland is Parks and Rec, and then there is Civic and Institution on the corner of 35th and Harrison, so that's the fire station. So the purpose of the request is to redevelop the site for a light industrial use. The owner has submitted a permit to demolish both buildings and intends to redevelop with the use that is permitted within the light industrial zoning district. So the neighborhood commercial district is the existing zoning. This zoning district's really intended to provide for commercial uses that serve the needs of nearby residential neighborhoods. The proposed zoning to a light industrial zoning district really allows for a variety of light manufacturing, fabricating, processing, distributing, and warehousing uses. Light industrial zoning does require that the use be enclosed within a building and be low in intensity with minimal, if any, outside impacts. So notices were sent to property owners within 200 feet notifying them of tonight's public hearing, and a notice was published within the Quad City Times. To date, staff have not received any responses from budding property owners, although it should be noted the city owns the land directly to the south. So this is just a public hearing, so a formal staff recommendation will be provided at the October 18th Planning Zone Commission meeting.
Thank you, Matt. Would commissioners have any questions at this time? Commissioner Eichelberry.
Hi, how long has the property been vacant? Or the space? You said it was unoccupied at the moment? I'm going to have the petitioner answer that question.
Hi, my name's Ryan Scriven. I'm the owner of those two properties. As far as I know, they've been vacant for five years. They've changed ownership twice. I would be the third owner in the last, I want to say, four years. The buildings are not habitable. The floors are collapsing inside. There's been roof damage, so there's a bunch of water damage inside. It's also full of homeless people that have been run out. I boarded, I secured all the windows and the doors, so they start breaking the glass to get in. I go in there every couple days and clean out heroin needles. I have pictures, and there's actual heroin in there. There's been a couple stolen cars dumped in the parking lot back there. So my goal is to get it rezoned. The impact, there wouldn't be any semi-traffic, there wouldn't be any additional traffic load outside of that. There wouldn't be any outside storage. Everything would be enclosed in the buildings that I'd like to build. Any other questions?
Would you like to explain your project a little bit to us?
Okay, I do remodeling and decking. I'm kind of like suburban, which is the property right next door. So I would have kind of the same building as them as far as business-wise. I would just keep my equipment inside. I would have a little shop. There wouldn't be, like I said, no real outside storage. That would be an eyesore and an impact to the community or anything like that. Everything would be kept inside. If anything was outside, it would be what was ready to go the next morning, so nothing would sit.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Matt, could you explain the reason to go to industrial as opposed to the commercial that it already is? If nothing's going to be stored outside?
Sure. So under the commercial zoning district, you wouldn't be able to do the applicant's business plan, which falls under a light industrial type of use. So that includes contractor-type work or small-scale manufacturing that can be done in an I1 that would not be allowed under the current neighborhood commercial.
Right. So suburban construction is considered a heavy retail use. So I know it's mostly contractors that purchase product from them, but the general public can as well. So that's why they're in C3 and they're there with a special use permit. The I1 would be able to allow the petitioner to actually do some of the fabrication ahead of time, as well as storage of materials and heavy equipment associated with his work.
Thank you.
And from what I understand, that was I1 until 2019, and it was rezoned to C3 vacant, and it's still been vacant.
So it, under the previous code before 2019, the entire area was M1, and the city readjusted it back to be more in line with the comprehensive plan at the time.
I remember those conversations when we did that. All right. Commissioners, any additional questions? Tom, did you have something?
I did, but I was answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
That would close, oh, no, wait a second. You can sit down. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to step forward and speak either in favor of or in opposition to this petition? Final call? Seeing none, final call for questions from commissioners. Seeing none. That will close case REZ 22-06. It will return to us at our next meeting.
October 18.
October 18, thank you.
October 18.
Thought I had it written down. We'll move on to the regular meeting agenda. Roll call, please, Commissioner Manus.
Thank you. Stokk.
What?
Yeah. Darrington.
Here.
Manus, yes. Hepner.
Here.
Ingram.
Present.
Tomlin excused, Johnson excused, Eichelberry.
Present.
Schneider.
Present.
We have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Manus. Old business, we, wait a second. Report to city council, we'll go through this again.
Sure. We have a, the case REZ, I think it's 2204, that's 1200 East 39th Street, is going up to second consideration at city council. Other than that, I have nothing new to report.
Thank you, Laura. Sorry for me mixing that up. Secretary's report.
Move the report.
Second.
All in favor of the secretary's report, second go around, signify by aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. It will remain as printed. Report of comp plan, anything new, Laura?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Zoning activity, Commissioner Schneider.
Okay, thank you. We have case number REZ 22-05, request of E&amp;A Enterprises LLC on behalf of Circle K Properties LLC to rezone approximately 51 acres of land bounded by Forest Grove Drive, Interstate 80, the city limit, and Utica Ridge Road from S-AG Agricultural District to R3 Single Family and Two Family Residential District and R-MF Multi-Family Residential District. Staff recommends that the southern 26.7 acres be rezoned to R2 Single Family Residential District in place of the requested R3 Single and Two Family Residential District. With the changes to R2 Single Family Residential District, staff recommends case REZ 22-05 to be forwarded to the city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the listed findings and conditions, and I so move.
I'll second.
Case number REZ 22-05 has been moved and seconded for discussion. Matt?
Thank you. The subject site outlined in yellow on the vicinity map, it's located along the eastern border of the city, adjacent to the city of Bettendorf. It's bounded by the Interstate 80 to the north. Just to the northeast is the truck stop, I'm sorry, the rest stop. And then immediately to the east is Forest Grove Crossing, which is a new subdivision in Bettendorf, which has single-family homes on the southern portion of that property, and then with multifamily on the northern portion closer to the interstate. The southern boundary is Forest Grove Drive, and then further to the east is Utica Ridge Road. So in terms of the city of Davenport zoning, it's currently zoned under an agricultural zoning district, which is consistent with the land to the east of Utica Ridge. However, the city of Bettendorf is zoned for residential. City council adopted an amendment to our future land use map earlier this year, which amended this portion of the city from urban fringe to residential general. Along with that, the urban service boundary was expanded to encompass the entirety of this development site in the current farm. So the purpose of the request is to expand the subdivision just to the east in Bettendorf, westward into the city of Davenport, following a similar development pattern. So the northern 24.3 acres, the applicant is proposing a rezoning to RMF, which is multifamily. And then the southern 26.7 acres would be rezoned to a lighter, single-two family district. The images on this slide show existing homes in the Bettendorf side of that subdivision. So the northern portion being rezoned to multifamily residential, really intended to accommodate a higher density of housing and a variety of different types, which includes single-family semi-detached, two-family townhomes, and multifamily dwellings. The applicant's application petitioned for an R3, which is single-family and two-family residential. This is intended to accommodate moderate-density neighborhoods. However, staff is recommending that southern portion be rezoned to R2 Single Family zoning district. This is a lower-density single-family that staff believes is more in line with the lot sizes and dimensions in that Forest Grove Crossing in Bettendorf. So staff have had conversations with the applicant, just notifying them of our recommendation, and they are amenable to the R2 zoning district. So this slide, I just wanted to highlight the differences between the R2 versus the R3 district. So in the R2 district, single-family and single-family semi-detached minimum lot area is 10,000 square feet, as opposed to smaller lot sizes in the R3, which for single-family would be 7,500. And single-family semi-detached, I believe that's 4,000 square feet per dwelling unit. So the R2 is closer to the lot sizes, which are about a quarter acre in that Bettendorf subdivision. And then minimum lot width is expanded where it comes to single-family semi-detached with a minimum lot width of 60 compared to 30 in that R3 district. And then setbacks are just slightly more generous in the R2 district as well. Staff are also recommending conditions pertaining to street connections. So starting at the south, a connection to Forest Grove Drive, staff is recommending a condition that a street be extended north to the site to align with Eagle Ridge Road directly to the south. The condition is also phrased to require that with the first phase of development. The reason for that being is that we don't want to get to property within the city of Davenport by having to drive through a city of Bettendorf neighborhood and jurisdiction. The second note on this PowerPoint is to connect the existing roadway stubs in the city of Bettendorf. So there's two, there's Shane's Way to the north, and then just slightly south about the middle of the site would be Clarissa's Place. And that's roughly where the boundary is between the multifamily zoning district and the staff-recommended R2 boundary. And then the third condition would be that three street connections should be planted along the west boundary line, and that's really to prepare for future development of the farm property to the west. Staff have reached out to the Parks and Rec Department, and looking at their comprehensive plan for the city, they've identified a need for some type of park space within this northeast quadrant of the city. It's really a park desert. So staff are recommending that a pocket park be dedicated as part of this rezoning. In terms of public input, a neighborhood meeting was held on September 19th at Eastern Avenue Library. There were two property owners in attendance that neighbored the subject site. Their concerns were largely pertaining to the density of the development, street connections, and stormwater management. And staff sent notices to property owners within 200 feet notifying them of the public hearing. And the city of Bettendorf was also notified, and to date, staff have not gotten any written responses from the public. So with that, staff are recommending the southern 26.7 acres be rezoned to R2 Single Family Residential instead of the requested R3. And then with the change to R2 Single Family Residential, staff recommend the case be forwarded to city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the listed findings and conditions. So in terms of findings, the rezoning map amendment is consistent with the future land use map, which identifies the property as residential general. The proposed zoning map amendment to R2 Single Family Residential District and RMF is compatible with the zoning of nearby developed property. The proposed zoning map amendment will enable the area to be developed in a manner consistent with the adjacent Forest Grove Crossing subdivision in Bettendorf. With conditions requiring street connectivity and preserving the existing tree buffer along the interstate, the proposed zoning map amendment will promote the public health, safety, and welfare of the city. And then finally, the proposed amendment will create, will not create any nonconformities following development. So there are seven conditions. The first one being that a traffic study would be required to see if any future improvements are needed along Forest Grove Drive. Two would be the street connections shall be planted to align with the public right-of-way of Eagle Ridge Road to the south, and then Shane's Way and Clarissa's Place in the city of Bettendorf to the east. And then three would be a minimum of street, sorry, a minimum of three street connections planted to the west lot line for the purpose of continuing development westward. Four would be a street connection to Forest Grove Drive shall be constructed as part of the first phase of development and shall provide connectivity to the entire development. Five would be a minimum of a quarter acre shall be reserved as a pocket park. Six, no lot shall be planted to contain more than one zoning district. And then seven would be a tree survey from a certified arborist for the northernmost 40 feet of the property shall be submitted. Existing trees over six inches in diameter at breast height, in a good condition, shall be preserved to the minimum, to the maximum extent practical to act as a buffer between adjoining development and Interstate 80. When tree removal is necessary, replacement, one tree for one tree removed is required.
Thank you, Matt. I've got kind of a question, more of my own curiosity, I guess, than anything else. In all my years, 27 years of being on the commission, I've never seen such a large piece of Davenport property get jumped over to develop in the opposite direction. My question that you might not have an answer for is street naming. Will the Bettendorf streets be named, or will the streets in Davenport be named the Bettendorf names, or will it line up with eventual streets that are already existing further to the west? Do we know?
It's not determined yet. Generally, the possessive street names is against city policy to have possessive street names. So it's not determined at this point if those names will continue to be named the same as they are in Bettendorf. That will be under further discussion when we get to the subdivision.
Okay, thank you. Just was curious, I'd never seen this before. Thank you, Laura. Would the petitioner like to step forward and speak to the commission?
Mike Richman, Townsend Engineering, representing the petitioner. Yeah, as Matt indicated, we've had several productive discussions regarding the change from R3 to R2, and we're fine with that and the other conditions, so I have nothing additional to add unless you have some questions.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Schneider, don't be running off.
So my question is, given the changes, how many units in total would be possible?
I don't know, we haven't gotten to that stage yet. It just depends on how we configure the multifamily and whether we're going to do four plexes or three plexes. And then there's a possibility of doing a couple, two-family semi-detached in the R2, but right now, the main goal is to do single-family, one-lot residences there to mirror the Forest Grove subdivision, so.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Darrington.
Yes, I have a question about the multifamily section of the top, is, of what? Is this, how is this going to be similar or different from what is over in Bettendorf in that same area?
I think it'll be different because it's going to be a different developer, so the architecture will be different, the floor plans will be different. It'll be similar, but where, I think we're planning on doing three plexes and four plexes, which they're doing currently, so. And similar lot sizes then.
Same height?
It's not determined.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you, Commissioner Darrington. Any additional questions? Seeing none, you're released. Would anybody in the audience like to step forward with any views in opposition or in favor of the petitioner's project? Final call? Seeing none, commissioners, final questions? Seeing none, we will close case REZ 22-05 after this vote. Commissioner Manus.
Thank you. Schneider.
Yes.
Eichelberry.
Yes.
Johnson. Oh, sorry, excused. Tomlin, excused. Hepner.
Yes.
Bransgard, excused. Reinhardt.
Excused.
Excused. Manus, yes. Darrington.
Yes.
Stokk.
Yes.
It passes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Manus. Case REZ 22-05 is closed. We'll move on to subdivision activity. Commissioner Schneider.
Okay, we have case number F22-12, request of CF Cayman DVN LLC for a final plat of Scrabble addition for a one-lot subdivision on 158.12 acres located west of Division Street and north of Interstate 80 in Ward 8. Staff recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission accept the listed findings and forward case F22-12 to the city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the listed conditions, and I so move.
Second.
Case F22-12 has been moved and seconded for discussion. Matt?
Okay, so the subject site is the new warehouse and distribution center being built just west of Division Street and then north of Research Parkway. So the purpose of the plat is to dedicate the extension of Research Parkway. The subject property does have some floodplain on it along that western boundary, which will be shown in Outlots. So the site is zoned for light industrial, and it is shown as industry on our future land use map. So the final plat will put the new warehouse and distribution center on Lot 1. Right-of-way will be dedicated for the extension of Research Parkway, which will consist of three separate roundabouts. And then six and a half feet of additional space will be dedicated towards Division Street to widen that right-of-way. Then Outlot 1 and Outlot, I'm sorry, Outlot A and B on the west side of the property will contain the floodway, or the floodplain, and those will not be developable. The intention was to keep that separate from the building in sight. And because this property is currently developed, their easement needs have been planted on the site to accommodate their, their needs. So staff are recommending the commission accept the listed findings and forward the case to city council with a recommendation for approval. So the findings are that it conforms with the comprehensive plan, prepares the area for future development or current development, and that the final plat with conditions will meet subdivision requirements. So staff are recommending six conditions, which are fairly minor and more housekeeping items.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, have any questions of staff at this point? Seeing none, would the petitioner like to step forward?
Mark Harple with Shai Hattery, representing the petitioner.
Any additional input from you?
No, as mentioned, the improvements have been constructed, and the easements reflect the utilities on-site, so really just the process of formalizing the plat and getting that approved and recorded to dedicate to right-of-way.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Seeing none? Sit down, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak either in favor or in opposition of this petition? Final call? Seeing none, final call for questions from the commission? Again, seeing none. Commissioner Manus, vote please.
Thank you. Stokk.
Yes.
Darrington.
Yes.
Manus, yes. Hepner.
Yes.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Passes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Manus. Thank you, Commissioner Schneider. That moves us on to future business. Laura, anything?
Yes, we have a couple items coming up, so you'll have the consideration of the rezoning that was at public hearing tonight. We also will have another public hearing for a zoning text change that will be coming forward as well.
I look forward to that. I look forward to that. It's been a while since we've had to do a text change. Any communication or other business, anybody? Anybody in the audience like to speak? Seeing none? Move to adjourn? That's not a motion.
I motioned.
Commissioner Schneider did. All in favor of adjournment, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you for your attendance.